Okay, all right, welcome back. We're now going to do District 3. We are going to be jumping around just to make sure you're paying attention. District 3, then District 1, then District 2. Just to keep you guys on your toes. District 3, I was looking at the map. It kind of, if you squint, looks a little bit like an upside-down question mark. I was checking it. I was trying to come up with shapes. It was not easy. Like a hook, an upside-down question mark. Basically, its southernmost point is Lighthouse Field State Beach. Eastern boundary reaches toward West Cliff Drive, just shy of Beach Street, Pacific Avenue, traffic circle at the Wharf. It wraps, sorry, switching pages. It wraps in near Lagoon. It stretches northwest toward University Terrace Park. It includes Bayview Elementary School, half of the circle's neighborhood, Mission Street, basically from Cafe Brazil down past the Hampton Inn at Swift Street. That's basically the contours of the district. So we have two candidates running for this District 3 seat. The incumbent, Shebra Kalentari-Johnson. She's vying for her second term on the Santa Cruz City Council. She's lived in Santa Cruz County for more than 20 years. She ran against Justin Cummings last year for the District 3 supervisor seat. Professionally, Shebra is a grant writer. She's a social impact consultant for the organization that she helped found, which is called Impact Launch. Impact Launch has worked with companies like Cliff Bar, Ecology Action, United Way of Santa Cruz County, and the Pajaro Valley Community Health Trust. She's brought millions of funding into the county. On the council, she's helped usher the city's oversized vehicle ordinance, the homelessness response plans. She's led on the city's Children and Youth Bill of Rights. And she's a mom. Okay, Joy. Okay, yeah. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, Joy. Joy Schendeldecker has lived in the area now known as District 3 for nearly a decade. She ran for mayor against Fred Keely in 2022. She's served as a district delegate for the California State Assembly. Schendeldecker is an artist, a community organizer, a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, and she's worked with Santa Cruz for Bernie. Like Shebra, she too is a mom. All right, so these are our two candidates. Yes, okay. And I'll just say, we're not going to do a lot of clapping, right? We're going to try. Please be courteous. Let the candidates answer. Don't clap, cheer, et cetera, in between. Okay, we're going to start with 60-second openers from each of them. And, I don't know, Joy, you want to start? And then Shebra.
Okay. Hi. So thank you so much for organizing and for all of you being here to support the electoral process. I'm just going to be very dry with my introduction. My campaign is endorsed by the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council, SEIU 521, Santa Cruz for Bernie, UCSC College Democrats, Strong Town Santa Cruz, the Campaign for Sustainable Transportation, council member Sandy Brown, and many other community members. My politics are consistent with the California Democratic Party platform, including tenant protections, disability and economic justice for our unhoused neighbors and those living in vehicles, programs that help our elders age in place, raising wages for those struggling to meet the cost of living, progressive taxation and a people's budget, publicly funded elections, abundant, dense, affordable housing in all areas of the city, coupled with a citywide community workforce agreement, demilitarization of police, decarceration, and criminal justice reform.
Thank you for hosting this. Each of us are here tonight because we care deeply about our community. And over the last two decades, as a public health professional and council member, I've produced results on critical issues for this very reason. I want to contribute to the well-being of our home. I prioritize the issues that I've heard from you are important. And as a community, we've increased our investment in youth. We've prioritized safe, vibrant, and open spaces. Safe, vibrant parks and open spaces. We've decreased the number of unsheltered people living on the streets, and much more. It's important to acknowledge and celebrate the progress that we've made together, but we all know there's a lot more work to be done. So envision a Santa Cruz where neighborhoods and parks are filled with kids and seniors building community, where West Cliff is fully restored, where we've transborne our downtown alleyways. Now, we aren't too far from this vision, but we do have work to do. And improving our city needs effective, pragmatic, and experienced leadership, and that's what I bring. Thank you.
Great, okay. And so Shebra, I'm going to start with you. So back and forth, I'll try to keep the order correct. But this touches on a little of what you just said. Basically, being a council member is a really hard taxing job. You don't get a lot of thanks for it. And it's been a particularly difficult year this year. And why do you want to keep doing it?
I can see the results in our community. And I could see us moving towards the direction that I hear our community wants us to move towards. And that's what inspires me and that's what motivates me. When I knock on doors and I listen to community members and they bring up an issue and I'm able to share, well, these are the incremental steps that we've made. Homelessness, for example. You know, we mentioned 29% decrease in a period of one year. That's unprecedented, right? Over 700, over almost 800 people served in the last two years because of what we've stood up as a city. Increasing our investment in youth and having a youth liaison serve with the city council, that hasn't been done in our county, that hasn't been done in our city. So I see the results, the community sees the results. We're making progress. And because there's more work to do, I'm motivated to do it. And I know that I can't do it alone. It takes all of you, it takes all of us, and it takes your ideas, your thought partnership, but we'll get it done.
Joy, kind of the same question. You know, it's a hard thing to do, it's kind of thankless, it's increasingly personal. You know, public officials are becoming, it's becoming an increasingly taxing personally. So what do you, what do you want, why do you want to do this?
I want to increase participatory democracy for everybody in our community, not just the people that are being listened to now, but everybody. And that's why one of my proposals is for, say, funding precinct assemblies in place of some of our consultancies, which are very, very expensive and don't always have great rewards. I also want to help protect people, friends of mine who die because they live outside. So yes, people have been housed. Yes, there have been improvements in shelter, which is great. It's not enough. There are too many barriers. And we've had a 33% plus increase in unhoused deaths last year. So 800 people get off the streets, 200 of those people are dead, right? 200 people are dead. Many of them are my friends. That is not acceptable, right? We need to care for people where they are without causing more harm to them.
Okay.
To remind her, everyone has 90 seconds for your answers. These are 90-second answers.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, I do want to return to the question of homelessness, but first of all, I want to, and also I want to say you can speak to each other and respond. So we'll be doing some of that. I just, we will return to the question of homelessness. I think right now I'd like to just ask, it's Joy, I'm starting with you, about West Cliff Drive. So I want to talk about West Cliff Drive as the poster child for climate change, for erosion, for things that are happening, impact on our region. Should we reinforce West Cliff Drive? Should we make it a two-way, you know, try to keep it a two-way road? Or should we just surrender to the sea and let it be a one-way road?
Yeah, well, you know, the writing's on the wall, right? We all know that climate change is a disaster that is happening now. We're in many ways a privileged community. West Cliff Drive is an incredibly privileged street. But this is coming, and we can't deny it. So, you know, some of the buttressing that's happened since last year's storms have been paid for by federal funding, you know, okay, fine. But I don't think that that is a sustainable solution. There is a ton of infrastructure underneath of West Cliff Drive. Sewer lines, gas lines, those need to move, and we need to be planning for that now. I know it's, that's not like a popular thing to say because it's expensive and it's time-consuming and it's disruptive. But a vision for the future can include a linear park that has access for pedestrians and cyclists and people with mobility issues, where we have access points, but we're not having it be like a line for cruising. This is a natural wonder, and it's an area for cruising with fossil fuel vehicles. So there's, you know, there's neighborhood impacts and we need to address those. And I think that's something that we can start doing now, you know.
To not keep it a two-way road.
No, I do, just to be brief, is, yeah, I support making it, you know, temporarily one-way or portions of it shut off.
Shebra, same question. Focusing on West Cliff quite a bit over the last year-plus and met with community members, did the garage meetings, went to pretty much every single virtual and in-person forum that we've had, and actually have now been selected, one of six across the state, to serve on the California League of Cities Coastal Cities Leadership Group. So learning from other communities that are faced with the same issues. It's not coming, it is here, clearly. We saw it last year, we're seeing it again this year. We just did a round of polling with the community, so we released those results last week. And the results are interesting. There is a significant preference for one-way. And we did an oversampling for folks who live adjacent to, the neighborhoods adjacent to West Cliff, and that's about 50/50. So we have to look at, we have to look at this holistically. We have to address the immediate concerns, which we have done. And that was an agenda item that I, myself, and Vice Mayor Golda brought forward. And then think about what's going to happen in 10 years, what's going to happen in 20 years. So this is going to come before the council this spring. We're gathering all the information. I'm listening to the community members, I'm looking at the science, I'm learning from other coastal communities so that we can make the best decision to preserve this real gem, worldwide gem that we have in our community.
Great. Okay, let's move on and start talking about housing a little bit. And I think we'll start with Measure M. If you could, each, Shebra, you're first. If you could talk about your stance on M and explain why.
Sure. You know, interestingly, as I'm knocking on doors, not a lot of people are talking about M. People are confused, curious, concerned about what's happening downtown, and concerned about height. So I'm hearing and I'm listening to the community that that's a concern, that we're changing rapidly, although this has been in the works for, you know, decades. We're changing rapidly, there's a concern about height. And I think as council members, we do need to listen to that. I didn't take an official position on M until I saw the impact report. And I read the impact report and I heard the presentation. And ultimately, I think Ms. O'Hara really explicitly named it, that it will inhibit housing and it will keep us from building our housing as quickly as we need to. And we all know that that's a problem and an issue in our community. So I have taken a position, I will be voting no on M.
I do plan to vote yes on M. This is, you know, not the easiest decision to make, sort of wading through the information. I am not convinced that limiting some of the heights will, and increasing the density, the inclusionary housing rate, will stop the production of housing. The thing that is stopping the construction of housing is for-profit developers land banking and sitting on their property until the interest rates come back down. We have the Calypso Project by Depot Park that's been approved. It went through the whole gauntlet of planning and permitting and an appeals process. And it's on hold for now because the interest rates went up. I think that there are ways that we can incentivize the affordable housing portion of, for those for-profit developers. I don't feel very sorry for for-profit developers because they make so much money. And they are not transparent about what they mean when they talk about penciling out. Who is it penciling out for? It's definitely not penciling out for the community. So we know that affordable housing units are really quite expensive. And we can, through progressive taxation, we can come up with money to help subsidize those units and incentivize them.
Do you want to respond? Okay. Yeah, again, we're not laughing so much, but, okay. Shebra's going to respond. And you have a chance to respond to, of course.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to address the inclusionary piece of this. This isn't theoretical. We've seen cities like San Francisco, who tried to increase their inclusionary rates, have to go backwards. They raised it to 25%. They weren't able to get affordable housing, and then they had to go backwards. I believe to 15%, I can't remember now. So no housing equals no housing. It equals zero affordable housing. So I think that's a huge concern with Measure M. And one of the other things I wanted to add is that as part of the housing element that we just passed, I was on the Subcommittee for the Housing Element. We were approved by the state. We said we want to look, we want to really do a deep dive and look at what are those thresholds? Where can we push that threshold to, to meet the affordable housing thing that we have in our community without going backwards? And builder's remedy is not theoretical. Other communities have had to face it. And then you lose any minimum local control that you have, you lose that local control.
Yeah, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Joy respond to that. And that question of the evidence of, you know, raising that affordable rate, like, where's the evidence that it would work?
Well, I think the evidence from San Francisco isn't conclusive. We don't have, you know, the end-all, be-all conclusive evidence that raising it to 25% in our community will kill all the projects. We have state, we have things coming through the state all the time. The density bonus, you know, we can, they can build a lot more market-rate apartments than you used to be able to. We can, we can make it work for the for-profit developers. I think where we're going to get the majority of our housing is on the land that we own. And prioritizing that and adding to that, land banking, a municipal land bank and a community land trust is going to get us more affordable housing because we have control over it. I think there's another element in terms of the fear of the builder's remedy coming in. In many cases, the builder remedy, they're actually choosing to build lower. They're not necessarily choosing to build higher. It's much more expensive to build a tall building than it is to build a mid-size building. So I think that we can find a sweet spot. Also, I think it's important, people are really emotional over this issue. And I don't actually think it's going to, the sky is not going to fall whichever way this goes. I happen to lean more on the one side because I feel like participatory democracy is so important. And if the Planning Department and our city council just override our general plan that we worked on for 12 years, that's not democratic.
And I just, I'm going to let Shebra respond because she spoke a little bit longer, if you want to. But I am really interested in other cities, if not San Francisco, other cities that you might know of that are doing it where it is successful. But I will let you.
I'll just say that every affordable housing group and initiative in this community is opposed to Measure M. So that's telling for me.
All right. Let's just move on a little bit.
Just want to, we're going to hold applause till the end, please. We want to get through as many questions as possible. We have to stop when there's applause, so please hold it till the end. Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about Mission Street. So we'll talk about affordable housing there. The part like from Laurent down past Swift Street, it runs through District 3. Do you want to see more housing developments along Mission? We have the Food Bin redevelopment happening. Where do you see District 3's role in meeting the city's arena numbers? I cannot remember now. It's Shebra first, sorry.
Yeah, I think there's room on Mission, being really cognizant that Mission Street is a disaster. I try to avoid it at all costs, so that is absolutely something we need to think about. Food Bin has come up, way more than Measure M when I'm knocking on doors. I don't know if it has for you. So we need to be, we do need to think about traffic flow, we need to think about increased vehicles. But I think there's space on Mission Street for housing development. But District 3, for the most part, is our single-family homes. We've done a lot on ADUs and making sure that we streamline ADUs, but I think we could, there's some more we can do. We have some state laws, SB 9 and SB 10, that we could look at, seeing how we can implement housing in our neighborhoods, making sure that we maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, but addressing our housing need. So, yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of, you know, so for-profit developers, they do this thing called land banking, which is like that empty lot, that crazy empty lot across from Farrell's Donuts at the end of Fair Street. That was, that's been empty forever. It was bought seven years ago by a developer who lives in San Jose, just sitting on it, tax write-off. Could be used for a safe parking program or a safe camping spot, just sitting there. You know, so I think we have a political problem. I do think we have room, we could put 1,000 more people easily on Mission Street. There are dozens of parcels that are already identified. There are extra parcels that are just sitting there, closed up. Burger just closed, owned by somebody living in San Diego, right? These are not parcels that are owned by people that live in our community, that are invested in our community, that care how that property is used. It's an investment for them. So that's where we need to build political will around things like a land value tax, right? We need to talk back to real estate investors and hedge funds and do things locally to rein in the control that they have in our community, to just leave things vacant for years, planning approved, hundreds of housing units, thousands even, around the city that could be there, that are not there because of them, not because of your neighbors.
Thank you. Okay, to talk about homelessness, but yes.
Sure. My approach is not to alienate and ostracize, it's to reach out, collaborate, talk to folks, whether they are affordable housing developers in our community or outside of our community. That's the approach to activate these spaces. I absolutely agree with Ms. Schendeldecker that we have a lot of space that we need to activate. But it's, we have to invite the conversations and invite the partnerships. And one other thing I'll add is, maybe a little bit of a tangent, but we have a lot of empty storefronts in our down, not a lot, actually. We have the least amount that we've had in a number of years, but we still have some empty storefronts. And I'm working actively right now on addressing that through incentive programs.
All right, well, let's just move on. I really want to hit this question of homelessness. You've disagreed in the past about it, so I'd like to talk about it a little bit now. I think it's Joy's, you first? I don't know. I have the same question for both of you. And the question is, sorry?
Joy.
Joy, thank you. Chris is keeping me honest. A little bit also about the point-in-time count, about that number that you referenced in your, in your opening. So the point-in-time count showed 30% decrease in the homelessness, in the number of people homeless. There are issues with the point-in-time count that one could argue. Does the city, Joy, you've been critical of the city in the past, does it deserve some credit for that? And obviously, your opening indicates that maybe you don't think so, but talk about that a little bit now. Does the city deserve some credit for it, or are we moving in a bad direction?
I think that the city, and even Shebra, could get some credit for Tier 3 Safe Parking Program, for example. That's a program that works, and that's why we have a massive waiting list for that, 60-plus vehicles. Other part of your ques, so, but really, okay, here's the thing.
The homelessness, so.
Yes. So I think it is, we can do things much better to work cooperatively with the county, the county's health department, Housing for Health Program. I know that there are just constant complaints that the county's not doing enough. The county, we know, doesn't have a whole lot of discretionary funding. You know, stuff is messed up from the state level and the federal level. So hands are tied, you know, often. But the city has policies that disrupt the good work that the county does in terms of outreach and connecting people to services which can lead them to more permanent situations. We have city policy, and you hear this all the time, once you start, start listening for the phrase "preventing entrenchment." So another way of framing that, preventing entrenchment, is forced itinerancy, right? People get moved constantly, and most of the time, when people get moved, their stuff gets thrown away. Community members buy them tents and blankets because nobody else provides them, and it gets thrown away.
So you said the city does deserve some credit, but...
They're undermining the best practices of the county and the state Department of Public Health by, for example, supporting a public nuisance lawsuit against the Harm Reduction Coalition of Santa Cruz County, the County of Santa Cruz Health Department, and the state Health Department. Suing a program that is working because of a minor nuisance, or perceived nuisance that we can take care of, that is undermining their work.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, no applause, please. And Shebra, you get a little extra time because I did ask Joy an extra question there.
Sure. We have mayors from across the country reaching out to us because of the impact that we've made, the progress that we've made. I'm going to read the numbers. In less than two years, 165 tent-based sleeping spaces, 776 people served in shelter and safe parking, 121 people in long-term stable housing from the work that we've done connecting them to housing, 44 individuals in long-term safe parking, 40% of them moved into stable housing, and 70 individuals in overnight parking. In less than two years, we stood up a homelessness division, a homelessness team. Our first touch point is our outreach team. They work very collaboratively with the county, with the, I'm forgetting the name, but of course, HPHP, but there's an encampment outreach team that the county funds. We work collaboratively with them. There is so much more we need to do. There is so much more we need to do. But we are doing way more than any other city in our surround, certainly in our county and in the surrounding region. So much so that we have mayors and city council members asking us if we can share with them what are we doing and how have we done it.
And so you're saying more of the same, we just keep...
No, no, I'm saying, continue with what we have and expand. I mean, we need to do a lot more. And let me just say that the city of Santa Cruz has its capacity as well. We're a small city, and we are among the top in terms of our rates of point-in-time count and our per capita ratio. So we're doing our part, we can do more. I am now appointed to the Housing for Health Policy Board. I'm going to work with my colleagues, other council members, and our Board of Supervisors so that the entire county can pick up some of these emergency services that we're providing.
Thank you. All right, I want to move on and take an audience question. How do you feel about the oversized vehicle ordinance? What do you have to say to those who say it displaces people? Shebra.
Well, I read the numbers. We are serving people, we're giving them a safe place to sleep, we're connecting them to permanent housing, and we haven't, we haven't displaced anyone. I mean, I think the numbers are telling, so.
Well, one thing that's telling is that in the first few weeks of, so OVO has only been enforced since December 4th. So we're really only just over two months into this. It's really new, and we should be continuing the stakeholder program. The city has declined. Staff put forward and Planning Commission just approved a new permit. They declined stakeholder recommendations to not just follow statistics on garbage, but to follow statistics, to follow data on the people. So we can surmise from the number of people who've been ticketed, who has entered the overnight-only safe parking program, that 60 people have disappeared. 60 vehicles have disappeared, so it's more than 60 people. So 30-ish vehicles have accepted safe, overnight safe parking. That's fabulous, that's really great. 60 are unaccounted for. And the city isn't really following what people are doing during the day when they are enrolled in the overnight-only parking program. It's not good data. They've put in there a provision to follow, to track garbage, right? Are hotspots cleaner than they were? But they didn't put, they declined to put in my suggestion that we make sure we have data on the people. Because we know that those people are still in our community, but outreach workers can't find them.
Thank you. Shebra, you want to respond?
Hold applause.
Just to clarify that Ms. Schendeldecker is one member of the stakeholder community and not the entire stakeholder community, because... and not the entire stakeholder community, because I think you said, the stakeholder community said to do this and the city didn't listen, so, so just to, just to point that out and clarify. And, and 40% of those in long-term parking have been housed. That's not just tracking garbage.
Okay. I'd like to ask you each three policies, I mean, Shebra, three things that you want to do to move forward, and Joy, for you, like, what are three things, three initiatives that you'd like to get going right away?
Joy.
Joy, sorry, you're first.
Well, I think that we should have a city-wide workforce agreement, which was at council in 2018, 2020, and it was dropped after the recall. It hasn't been agendized. This could bring together union and non-union labor organizations, community organizations, minoritized communities, small businesses, to work through our labor agreements in advance of approving a building project. It could cut down radically on things like wage theft, which is rampant in, especially in the carpenters that are working on our big buildings, and it could, I think it could really help to calm down the opposition to big projects, and it could really be a great accompaniment to our general plan. Okay, 30 seconds left, the two other ones. So, community workforce agreement, tenant protections. The reason that people are unhoused is because, yes, we have a shortage of housing. More than that, we have empty homes and overpriced homes. So we need to protect our tenants to stay in the homes that they already have. The largest growing population are elders. We need to help them stay in their homes.
Okay. Shebra, you're three.
Homelessness. I'm committed to supporting those who are unhoused in our community and those who are housed. So homelessness, continuing the work, expanding the work. West Cliff, this is right in my backyard, it's, it's something that I see and hear every day, not, again, just to restore the immediate, attend to the immediate needs, but really think about what we're going to do in the face of what's happening with climate change across our coast. And third, but not least, youth. See a young person here. We have this revolutionary youth liaison and Children, Youth Bill of Rights with the leadership of Council Member Watkins and Vice Mayor Golda. We brought the Children's Fund that brings in over 300,000 a year of revenue to our city to invest in youth. I want to see those investments grow. Nationally, I think only 9% of the GDP goes to investing in young people. I think we can do much better than the federal government here in our local community.
Okay, I have one last question and then we'll do the lightning round. This last question is from an audience member. I'm going to, it's going to be for both of you. It's kind of asking you, Joy, but I think we'll go for both of you, and that is, this question is, some voters find the aggressive nature of the DSA to be off-putting and overbearing. How can we all work together if there's not a willingness to come together? Why bring this divisiveness into our community? How does this help our citizens work together? So, I think more of a question of how do we all work together? How do we get over some of the divisiveness?
Yeah, I mean, some people think that some DSA members, although I think that's been like inflated to be this like really boogeyman, and there's a lot of like Red Scare stuff that happens on social media about DSA and what, who is in DSA and what they think and do. But, yeah, some people can be, you know, jerks sometimes. And I want to say that, that in terms of divisiveness, from my perspective, what's really divisive is the injustice that is pervasive in our community, that a lot of people don't seem to want to address head-on, and the inequality, growing inequality, policies that criminalize poverty and disability. I think those things are divisive, and so when we fight back against that, that is not being divisive, that is sticking up for values and principles. I do think that it's important for all of us to really try to not just be nice, not just be nice and, and conform to respectability politics, but to be true to ourselves in a way that does not harm other people intentionally and that does not purposefully disrespect other people. And I am often on the receiving end of that from the other side, right? So one thing that I've done for myself personally is to become a certified community mediator with the Conflict Resolution Center. Let's all of us do that.
Out of time, but that's a good place to end. Okay, Shebra.
Ms. Joy, Joy and I had coffee, Joy and I had coffee before the campaign kicked off and we talked about this because I have been on the receiving end. And there's a difference between civil discourse and attacking another human being. Attacking another human being is unacceptable. It's unacceptable to me, to my family, and it should be for our community. Civil discourse, I'm all about it. Let's have coffee, let's have coffee, let's get on the phone. Hopefully, the community is now seeing and witness that I am open to meet with anybody. I'm open to hear your ideas, I'm open to collaborate, I'm open to work together. I did meet with you. We had, I had tea, we don't drink coffee, and gluten-free scones, but, but, but the behavior of some members of DSA, since that's the question, is unacceptable and it will not be tolerated.
Okay, all right, so let's, okay, again, clapping, we're not going to hold clapping, but I think we can all clap for the idea that, we should all clap for the idea that we can, please.
All right, all right, calm down, calm down.
Let's not shout. Let's, let's all agree that we can try not to be divisive. Okay. All right, we're going to lighten up the mood and just do a quick lightning round and then we're going to switch. So, we will start a quick question. What does a fun day in District Three look like? Shebra.
A sunrise run on West Cliff, a walk with my dog in Neri Lagoon, and a cookie from Pacific Cookie Company. Oh, that's not District Three, sorry.
All right, we'll give you that one, though. Joy.
Some of you might have seen me on my bike, which I like super geeky, have put a campaign sign on the back with like a bamboo garden trellis. It's super cool. But, so I like to run my bike around, I like the rail trail. It's technically not in the district, but I go get some beer and some tacos. It's great.
We got the cookie, you get the tacos and the rail trail. Okay. How about, Joy, the last book you read?
Finished reading, I can't, my sense of time is awful, so I went to the Paro Valley fundraiser and I got like a book bundle, because you know they're still unhoused because of the flood last year, right? And I got two books, Gordo by, so good, just finishing that, short stories, and Isabella Ingrid, Ingrid Rosa Contreras, The Man Who Could Move Clouds, Columbia, really great.
Shebra?
Ribbons of Scarlet. It's about the role of women in World War, excuse me, the French Revolution.